Good evening. I'd like to call the February 19, 2019, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. I want to remind all present this meeting is being video and audio recorded. Please stand up.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Hi, I'm Vincent Moschello. I'm the Vice President of Development with ECA Solar.
Yeah.
I'm gonna just, and I have Elaine Menick, our Development Associate. I'm gonna just do a quick intro on the company and then hand it over to Elaine to go through this presentation. ECA is five years old. We're based in Lawton, Massachusetts. We have done north of $60 million for solar in the state of Massachusetts over the past few years, primarily focusing on rooftops with all of the power being sold to local cities and towns like your cell, you know, countless other partnerships that have worked out great for us and the towns that have participated. Just to get short and sweet with it, all of the panels and power is generated off-site, so it doesn't tie up any public land. Panels are placed on rooftops and industrial parks. And through a billing mechanism that the state of Ever... that EverSource offers, we're able to transfer billing credits to the town's accounts at a discount.
Yeah. If you guys look at the third page of your presentation, you'll see that we've worked with a number of different entities, from sheriff's department to school system, universities, water commissions, but most commonly work with towns. So, and then on the fourth page, you'll see the benefits to the town of Acushnet. So what you will be entering into is a net metering credit purchasing at eight percent of the face value. So the way it works is you'll see the net metering credits on your monthly bill, and then ECA Solar will bill the town for eight percent of the credits you receive. So this is considered a floating discount, so this ensures that you'll always pay twenty percent less for the credits than they're worth, even as energy prices fluctuate.
Just, so a quick note on that, where we get a lot of questions is, you're currently in a third-party supply program that's offered by the state of Massachusetts, which allows you to buy your energy supply for a discount. What we're talking about is the entire, the entire bill. So it still allows you to go out on the free market in our deregulated state and buy whatever the cheapest energy that you can buy is. Nothing about how you purchase energy changes. What Massachusetts has put into place and really has been the leader nationally with is this net metering program. So they have a solar-specific rate that they assign to our generating asset, which in this case it's in Canton, which is, you know, higher than, higher than what you pay. So you're not, you're not buying anything on a per kilowatt hour basis. What's happening is we're generating, at the end of every month, we get a bill from EverSource, but ours says, you know, negative $100,000 instead of you owe $100,000. And what we're, but they don't, they don't monetize that for us. So the state's put in this program to allow solar companies to monetize those credits. And what we're doing is going out into the market and selling those almost as if they're a gift certificate to EverSource.
And referring to the fourth page, you'll see that it says Acushnet may change allocation of credits up to twice a year. So for example, if the town were to build a new school or have an addition to a police station for budgetary purposes, you'd be able to allocate credits to that if need be up to twice a year, and that's just a matter of EverSource billing. And with data we've collected from the Conservation Commission based on all of your EverSource accounts, we've calculated fairly accurately that the town could save $51,472 per year. And over the course of the 20-year term, $1,029,435.
And that's based off of a 35-year historical trend that the DPU makes public. So we took the last 35 years of energy values, created a trend line, and then assumed that we'd be following that 35-year trend.
What happens at the end of 20 years? Can you renew it?
Yeah, so our lease and these modules are good for far longer than 20 years. If the town had interest at the end of 20 years and extending for another five years, we'd be happy to enter into that contract, but there certainly is the ability to extend this further.
Absolutely. And on the last page, it'll just be a quick explanation on how billing works. So as I said earlier, Acushnet will see the credits on their monthly bill, and then ECA Solar will bill the town for eighty percent of the credits you'll receive. So essentially, Acushnet will pay ECA Solar eighty cents for a dollar of electricity you receive, and that's guaranteed. That's a floating discount.
So what happens is, so you get your bill as you normally do. In the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see a reduction in this credit applied from, and then it'll give an account number, which would be ours. So, and then 14 days later, you would receive a bill from ECA. So you're never paying for something until you've already realized those credits. So you see the $10,000 bill reduction, 14 days later, you'd get a bill from us. So it's nice because if there's ever discrepancy, which sometimes in the first couple of months it takes the utility a little bit to sort of iron things out, and, you know, you never owe any money for anything that you don't perceive. This is purely just based on what we're able to deliver.
And that sort of wraps it up. Do you, if you have any questions for us, or we've been working diligently with Jim Merritt, who showed us around and helped us get the information for, to give us the numbers on your savings, so we thank him too for being here and all the help.
This would, hold on one second. This would be adding solar panels to the roofs or no?
No, we certainly offer that. This is a different proposal. So because we're not using any public land and all of the panels are placed off-site on a private site, this falls under the 30B state procurement exemption, which is basically the same one that you use for all your power purchasing. If you wanted to discuss modules going on a school roof or anything like that, we'd be happy to walk you through that process, but that would involve an RP and in this area that it could take years to get something like that through EverSource. This is something that'll be built, you know, March 15th. We're gonna start it.
I'm confused by your business, I guess, but I think, I think the net effect of what this, what's happening here is we're, we're, you're building a facility and we're customers of your facility. We're buying the electricity you are producing, but not directly, indirectly. So to justify what you've built, you need customers to sign on, and we're signing on as customers. Is that another way of saying what we're doing?
Yeah, exactly. You know, EverSource is basically a state-sanctioned monopoly on this region for distributing power, and this is their way of making sure that we're not selling power directly to you from, you know, across the state. But you are a customer, yeah, that's accurate what you said.
And I'd look, just one more. I'd love to start a conversation with EverSource about why we can't have appropriate solar generating facilities in this marketplace, because I'd really love to start that conversation because I won't go back in time and have a discussion about other EverSource issues, but, you know, we should have the capacity of facilities in this, in this area if we wanted to.
Yeah, no, and you can.
And I know it was a problem we explored it on our school roofs and apparently couldn't because there wasn't sufficient infrastructure or something like that to, to take the electricity that would be generated.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, we already have in town two major solar facilities. We have one off of Main Street, one off of Wing Road. They were basically put there for the same purpose that the ECA does. The power is generated by and sold back to EverSource, and then they net meter whoever wants to purchase it. We were approached by Rocket Solar at the time they built the facility off of Wing Road, but the proponent in that was, didn't appear to be on the up and up when we first got involved with them, and there's been some other issues now. That project's moving forward now with another individual, but, you know, this, it's power that they have built somewhere else in the, in the state, and it does. It's renewable, and because it's a renewable, the state does allow them to sell the net metering credits to whoever is interested in purchasing them. And what it does do is it does reduce our need for gas power generation of electricity or some other type of coal or fuel oil or petroleum-based fuel source to generate the electricity.
Didn't we try to do something like at the school grounds with solar?
We actually still are. We received, we received some information from another company who's willing to look at, you know, developing something on the schools, because EverSource is quick to say, no, we don't have the ability to generate electricity through our net or through our infrastructure. This company went back out and said, you know what, we think there possibly is, and EverSource has come back and said, well, you know what, you do the engineering, and you come back and you make a proposal to us, and, but that's, that's, that's long down the road. This is something that's immediate, that we can grab and we can, you know, put into place.
So I appreciate you folks coming in, but this is kind of unexpected. There was nothing in our book, and it's kind of a cop before the horse. I know you guys come in, just give us a quick briefing, it's basically a three-minute presentation, but I don't think any one of us three can ask any kind of real questions in detail of what we're getting ourselves involved in right now, without reading through your proposal, understanding more about it, but, you know, it was unexpected, at least by me, that this wasn't even coming. So it's kind of, you know, the cops before the horse. I mean, I, I can't ask you any kind of intelligent questions because I don't know what kind of material you've presented here for me to go through your information and then base on questions based off the information you've given me. So I'll look through what you have here. I'll be in contact with Mr. Merritt. He does most of our green energy in town, so through him, we'll probably be contacting either one of you two folks to see what's going on, and hopefully it'll be a net positive for the residents of Acushnet as far as our... This is only affecting town buildings, correct? It's not for residents or anything like that. So based on that assumption, we'll take a look at what we have and how you derived the $51,000 savings per year, and we'll see if it makes, I'll see if it makes sense or not for the community as a whole to engage in this 20-year plan. It's a big commitment, 20 years. I surely understand the aspects of net metering. Just your proposal, I don't know anything about because it's just landed in front of me, so I, I don't ask you any questions tonight, but you'll have more questions coming at you, Jim, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'd encourage you to email Elaine with any questions as well. I've been working diligently with Jim for a while. We've gone over, you know, painstakingly every bill that's been available, looking through historical uses.
So you, when you, when you... I'll just ask one quick question on the net metering. When you generate electricity, you said it's an eighty percent credit? Or is it a twenty percent credit to the town off what you generate and what we use?
So think of it, I'll just break this down almost as if it was your house. So like, your house has its own special utility rate, just as the school does, and they're not the same. So what EverSource has is they have one that they assign to the solar systems. It's called the A9 rate. So it's different than any other rate that you're probably using in your town. So our meter spins the opposite way from yours. So at the end of every month, we get a bill just like you do, but ours shows a negative amount. Where the eighty, twenty comes in is, we need to provide some sort of value in transferring those credits. And, you know, over the last, this has been, program's been placed since 2008 roughly. So since 2008, where the market has sort of settled, has been about twenty percent. It's trending, you know, the Government Baker's new program took a lot of the incentive money out of it. Solar's transitioning into more of an unsubsidized, you know, investment, but where the market has basically settled at a twenty percent discount to the face value of those credits. And our rate is relatively fixed, yours fluctuates, but, you know, to the extent that some new energy source comes in in 10 years and, you know, power drops down to, you know, twelve cents or something like that from the twenty that you're paying now, that's fine, you still get twenty percent off the twelve. It doesn't, it, you're not, you're not locking yourself into a fixed price that's, you know, you'll be on the hook for it down the years.
Is your price fixed for 20 years?
No, ours isn't fixed either. No, it's not. It, it has more stability than the normal EverSource rate does. It, it's, it's escalated over the last years is about one and a half percent, where the other ones are going up at more of a two and a half to three percent rate. But, you know, it's, it's possible that ours goes down as well, yeah. But it would go down with yours, I guess, is the point. You know, we, we sort of float with the market just as you do.
Okay, just one more. I mean, except for that, I love green energy development, and to the extent we can support more of it, I'm all in. Agree with Mr. Gasper, we need to understand what we're getting into, but I think there's a thumb on the scale already that I'd love to find a way to make it work. And I know Mr. Merritt's brought a lot of that to the town of Acushnet over the years, and I'm sure he's gonna do at least one more on our behalf, so, yeah, I'd love to see this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, meeting mail. Letter from the Library Trustees regarding the Library Director, Nina Grassa, Grassa being named Woman of the Year. The Library Trustees were closely with Nina and note firsthand that she is a committed professional and devoted advocate of the Acushnet Public Library. The trustees are thrilled that she has, that she has been recognized for her efforts not only by the local newspaper, but our state legislature and our congressman. The trustees are proud to share as well as deserve accolades with the Board of Selectmen and the residents of Acushnet. Congratulations to Nina. Next on the agenda, Woodward and Curran is here to discuss the comprehensive waste water, water management plan, management plan that we need to, the customer's schedule and funding for the state revolving fund, application dates and steps that need to be
I'll just get an introduction here. Thank you for having us on the agenda today. It's a pleasure to give you an update on where we are at with the CWMP project. And Rosemary Black here is here with me with Jason Jamoutis, who have been working on the project and developing the scope of work of where we're at to date. So I'm gonna have Rosemary come up and she'll review what has been completed on the project to date and where we are with the current needs area that we'll be looking at to move forward with for any potential suitors. Thank you.
Want me to pass this over? Thank you for having us tonight. I handed you two maps. One is the sewer master plan update, and it contains six areas that are what we call areas of need. It's needing something other than an onsite septic system. We started this process a little over a year ago, and we've looked through all the data to confirm these are, in fact, the areas where we're looking to potentially sewer. There, the reasons for that are, we've got some areas of severe soils, there's high groundwater, there's also environmental reasons. And the second map that I passed out is, it shows you three watersheds, the colors of three watersheds, and anything in those watersheds has a direct impact on the Acushnet River that runs directly into, into New Bedford Harbor. We confirmed with the Board of Health, I should start off by saying, before we started doing any of these needs areas, we met with Brian and the Board of Health, Planning, Building, Conservation. We sat down with the major town departments that would have an interest in looking at this planning to make sure that we encompass every area. You know, the Board of Health had very specific reasons for wanting to make sure that we had these areas correct, planning if the town had any large planning developments or areas that we're looking to develop. So what we did is, we have confirmed the areas of need, we went in and calculated what potential wastewater flows would be, and we looked at loads. Typically, most of it are residential loads, meaning most of the wastewater is comprised of residential areas. With the needs areas, and they're called needs areas, and these are prioritized by the color. So orange is number one, and number two is the nice lean area in the light green. So they're prioritized, and that was done by your town departments to what areas do they want us to look at first for removing them from onsite systems. This is part of a completion back in, I think, 2009, the town, or 2001, the town filed a wastewater master plan and filed it with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office. So this is continuing that study so that the town can get a fully approved comprehensive wastewater management plan. And with that, the second map that I showed you are the watersheds that impact the Acushnet River with mainly nutrients is what the state is looking at. By having a completed comprehensive wastewater management plan and the study that's been done on the Acushnet River, that qualifies Acushnet for zero percent state revolving fund money, which means you can borrow up to 30 years for the full cost of sewer construction, and the payback is zero percent. And that's an incentive because the state is looking for towns to clean up nutrient pollution, and in this case, it's, it's called the Massachusetts Estuaries Program, and they've studied inner New Bedford Harbor, and there's a contribution that comes from Acushnet. With this plan of sewer-ing these areas, Acushnet exceeds what's being asked by the state of pulling nutrients out of the water resources. So this plan will get you zero percent SRF. We applied for the town for SRF for two areas last August. The filing time is in August of each year. So we said, you know, let's, let's put two applications together for the first two priority needs areas, and the town was approved for that financing, which is good. That's a first step, and I think what we're gonna do is reapply for you next August because there are milestones that you have to hit as far as moving forward with state revolving fund money. And we knew it was gonna be a stretch, but we wanted to at least get the state looking at their budget so that next year when we file, they'll have enough budget and they'll approve you again. We sat down, looking at state revolving fund. They have very specific schedules that you have to meet. As I said, the first application goes in in August of each year, then in December, early January, they come up with what's called the Intended Use Plan, and that shows all the communities that they're going to fund. Acushnet made that plan. Then you would need a town meeting vote by June 30th of 2019 to approve the borrowing. And there's another milestone to meet in October. These are all dates that we knew it was gonna be tough to meet this year, but again, getting the applications up, we're prepared to do this for next year. So we're working to get some public outreach out so that by the time you go to town meeting, which now looks like it would be spring 2020, that enough information would be out to build consensus.
Just a question. There's been talk around here about doing it in-house and out here, that we would not qualify for that zero percent funding if we, not to try to do it in-house.
Yeah, it has to do with the public bidding laws. Because it's state and federal money, it has to be publicly bid, and we went through DEP on that to see, could we negotiate something with them, and it all has to do with public bidding.
There's no, no give, right?
There wasn't when I talked to them. It doesn't mean that we apply again next year and we talk to them at that point.
It's a pretty aggressive schedule, I was reading that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, so for the discussion tonight, I think that the board's in scratch this year as far as applying for that stuff. We don't have enough time to educate the public. It's a huge cost to homeowners first and foremost. I think it requires a long educational period and discussions with our public. I also think it's worth exploring what the cost is outsourcing it and what the cost is in-house doing it. I believe, so you're saying that number orange, which is the south end of town down past the quarry, is number one?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a big problem with doing phase number one, because you gotta go down Main Street, and that's a state highway. So I think that the board, as road commissioners, we sewer, water sewer and road commissioners, we need to be exploring and talking to the state on when, if at all, they have any plans on redoing South Main Street here, and try to work in sync with the state. So if they're gonna come down and do this highway at any point in the next year or two, that we're allowed to put new water infrastructure, there's already water infrastructure there, but also lay sewer main down the street when they're doing the road. So that'll keep us clear for a long time. So as far as phase one goes, I think that's a real uphill battle to even try to get this done in one year. I think that if you looked at phase two, which is from, I believe, the library over to the police department, I'll call it, because we have some sewer down a couple of those side roads, Wolver Ave and all of those over there, I think that's much more achievable. And I think that, you know, we have to look at the costs. So do you have a breakdown of cost for each phase?
We did. We did high-level, planning-level cost estimates for, to apply for the state revolving fund.
What were the costs for phase one and phase two?
I think they were, they're both very, very close, and I do want to say that we had flipped while we had needs priority one and two, we had flipped them to sewer area two first and then do one after that. So that was what you were talking about.
That's just an uphill battle. I mean, we need to, I, we all understand, well, most of us understand that that's a problem area. We already knew that, that it was gonna be a problem area because of the age of the homes and things of that nature, and the proximity to the Acushnet River. We know that. It's just a problem area because of states involved. It's not our road to go and dig up. And there's a lot of ledge over there, so we'll have, that's gonna be a much broader discussion that we're gonna have with our DBW superintendent. So you're saying that phase two would look more like phase one now?
Yes, as far as where it moves forward. And you're right, anytime we do any kind of project like this, we look at all the areas where we are proposing for infrastructure. Any state roads, we have to apply for state permits. I mean, there's a lot of permits. We look at, one of the first thing we do is we get the paving calendar from the state. When are you expecting to come in and do any paving? Because we need to coordinate that. If something's been just paved, you know, there's a five-year moratorium, so we're working, we're working within all of that during the design phase.
This road needs, South Main Street needs to be done for multiple reasons, so I think that this board needs to figure out when we're gonna push the state, the district, to do something about it and then engage in that conversation, that dialogue with the state. Is it District Five? Yeah, District Five. And have some conversation with them folks from the state to say, look, this is what we're planning on doing, we need to plan for the sewer project, you know, they got, when you plan on coming down and doing this? We've had, Mr. Noel and I had an interesting discussion probably a year, year and a half ago, and, you know, over this road and the height of the curb-ins and how dangerous it is because of PJ key instructed trailers and the sidewalks there and things of that nature. So I think that from the town's... So I think that from a town's perspective, I think that we go, and I'm going to call it, I'm going to stick with phase two, and I know we're flipping them, but we're going to say phase two. I think that's low bearing fruit that we could probably tackle first. I do know that our Director of Water and Sewer has some interest in doing this project, and I think that it could be easily done in-house on that side of town. I'm not so sure about the stretch down Main Street, maybe a combined effort or bringing in a major company to dig down the road, get the pipe weighed, and then we go in and do the neighborhoods. So I understand the 0% for 30 years sounds great. The problem with that is the cost inflation due to union pays, right? So what's the cost for phase one and what's the cost for phase two? Do you have that breakdown yet?
I think we looked at that. They were both right around the $12 million range. It's almost the same number of properties, a little over 300 in each of those areas. Again, we can open the discussion with Mass DEP. It's not only Mass DEP, but it's the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, and the bidding is, they're very, very specific with the bidding, the public bidding laws.
I mean, we just did, we just did a police station, right? I mean, it costs the residents, the taxpayers of Akushnet $5.7 million to build a police station. If anybody was building that building in the private sector, it would probably cost us a million bucks.
Yeah.
So there's that inflationary factor that's out there because of the wages you need to pay.
Yeah.
I think that from a taxpayer's perspective, if the $12 million bucks over, I think it's probably what, 250 homes in each phase roughly?
It's a little over 300.
It's right around 300?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, you do that math and you do what we could probably do in-house. If you're spending $20,000 on that 0% for the $12 million bucks and it comes out to $10,000 doing it in-house, we're saving each household $10,000. I think we know which route we're going.
Is it a question, is it $12 million per phase or $12 million for the two?
$12 million per phase.
That's $40,000 a house. I might.
It's, so you can't do the math that way because the way that you're going to charge is based on the land use. A single-family home would pay one portion. If it's two-family, it's, so what you've got to do is look at all the land uses, look at any commercial.
He's pretty close though. If you look at phase, we're going to talk phase two, which is the library to the police department, I would say 98% of that is single-family homes.
Just single-family.
So you're right on saying that 98% of those houses from the library down to the police department, the single families, you have basically one business that's there and they're already sewered.
Would they have to be tied into the system?
That's totally up to Akushnet. They have a right, if the sewer passes by their property, they have a right to hook in, but I don't believe the town has any mandate when they have to.
Only when the system fails.
Yes. And it's, I mean, it's to the town's benefit that everybody hooks in because the more user fees you have.
You're not talking about the sewer, I'm sorry, you're not talking about white sewer system that they have. You're talking, are you talking about, I think she's talking about homeowners.
No, no, the private sewer system that's hooked in.
Oh, yeah.
Is that the dairy?
Yeah.
That's dairy? I believe they're, they're planning to come in.
They would come in. They want to dish this out.
But as far as single-family homes, the Board of Health regulates that as to how long they have. So if somebody just put in a brand-new system, I think they have a moratorium of maybe seven years and then they're forced to tie in.
Okay.
Board of Health regulates that, not the Board of State.
Anyway, so.
Yes.
Only after, they have a moratorium that they allow. If your sewer system's less than so many years old, they give you like seven years moratorium to tie in, yes.
Right.
Just because if somebody just put a $20,000 system in, you're not going to force them right away, but they're still getting kind of.
Yeah.
The other problem is you're still paying the veteran.
You pay the veteran, is what I'm saying. You're still paying the veteran. You're not paying for the sewerers.
I don't know if, what's waived and what's not.
Under Mass general law, they have to pay the veteran. That's an assurance that the town, if the town borrows money, they have a capital cost recovery.
Right. How difficult would it be to, the cost difference like in-house, did you come up with those numbers?
Yeah, and we're in the process of finalizing, looking at, and again, they're planning level numbers. You won't know the real number until it's bid, but yes, we can look at that. And I can talk to people at the state level again to see what the potential is. I've been doing this for 25 years. I've never, never had a community be able to do that.
Yeah. I think, I think, look, we have all, it's chopped up from Nice Lane all the way down, it's chopped up into little block neighborhoods. I know that we could do this project, I'm very confident in our Water and Sewer Department and our DBW that we can do this. And what's nice about that phase two is most of those systems have not, all of the west side of Middle Road is all gravity-fed. So once the pipe is put down, all the homes will be gravity-fed and it'll just go downhill right into the main and it'll go straight down to where it needs to go. So it's pretty easygoing, other than hitting some ledge, which there's not a lot of ledge on that side of town. So I do, I have the utmost confidence in our DBW and our Water and Sewers Department that we can do phase two relatively easily and a very low cost. I believe that we could do the same in phase one down there. The only trouble that we'll have is passing by that quarry and some of the side streets with some ledge. But again, once you're off the main roads, it's pretty easygoing. We have to have a discussion. I think it's prudent for the board to have a discussion with our Director of Highway to come in and see his confidence level, and I believe that he's, he's got the confidence level and the ability with his team to go ahead and do it. And we've done a small project parade over here and, you know, I think that this can easily be done, but we'll have to see what the cost are. We're going to, we're going to run our own numbers and see where it's, where it's going to be done because I'm sure that if you tell the residents it's $10,000 or $20,000, I'm sure they're going to pick the $10,000 off.
Rosebud, could you address the planning cost that's not allowable?
What's not allowable are any design costs.
Right, that's the engineering part.
And what does you estimate per needs area, the cost?
Typically, and this, this is a rough estimate, it's typically about 10% of your construction cost. So it would be close to 1.2 million for each area. And that's your design, your permitting, it's getting all the loan applications in, and that cost, the state revolving fund does not cover that.
So we have to come up with 1.2 million by borrowing because I haven't got it.
Yeah.
So you'd have to borrow it just to create the plan.
Right.
Okay, now that can be calculated into the betterment so you get recovery of, but...
Oh, absolutely.
Indeed. But in the meantime, your, let's say you borrow 1.2 million to build the plan, and let's say it takes you a couple of years to actually do the project, who's paying the debt service on the 1.2 million?
That's the problem.
Okay.
There's a lot of discussion that still needs to be had. How, how far away are we at a completion of the whole CWMP? Are we there yet?
No, no. We are probably a third of the way in.
Wow, just a third, huh?
Yeah. Because we've got, the way that the plan is now, we've updated your master plan, we know what your flows are, we know where the areas are, we've got some conceptual planning level numbers, and now we're talking with the state on the filings in order to, we want to be able to put a report together that's going to give you approvals everywhere that you need them, and that's where we are right now. Then what comes after that is a draft environmental impact report on looking at each of the areas, any environmental issues that it impacts. And for Akushnet, you know, I've had a lot of discussions with the Mass DEP. With Akushnet, it's all positive because doing this type of sewer plan is going to clean up Inter New Bedford Harbor and the Akushnet River.
The only downside, just to be negative here for a second, is we have six needs areas that have been identified, and based on those numbers, that's $80 million. That's building eight elementary schools to this town.
Yeah.
I don't know how to do that.
So we're the town of Akushnet, we're not the city of Boston, so we'll take a slow approach, I believe, is what's going to happen because I don't believe that this board is capable of trying to convince all six needs areas at once to do this, and I don't believe that we want to take on that kind of debt. It's going to be hard enough to convince people with this $12 million number than the 1.2, so you're talking 13, say 13 and a half because we all know things go wrong and there's no contingency added in there and things of that nature. That's a tough nut to crack at town meeting and convincing people, no matter how good of a job we educate people. I think the lower the cost are, the easier it is to convince somebody. It's just like you when you go buy a car, you know, you're looking at a car for $30,000 versus the car for $60,000. The salesman's taking you over and you have no interest in the $60,000 car, but you want to buy that one, he keeps forcing the 60 one. We're not in the business of forcing people to do anything. I understand we're obligated to at least bring it to town meeting, but it's our job to sell this package to our residents.
So I don't think anybody would expect that the town do it all at once. It's a 20-year planning document, and most towns plan it over 20 years. We looked at the first two just to see how we could do getting you on the funding list. It's a very, state revolving fund is very competitive financing. So I think the first effort to go out for that was very positive, and I think a big part of that is because of the estuaries in the Inter New Bedford Harbor. The number that I gave you includes design, that's a total cost. So there's design, there's a 15%, I think it's a 15% contingency included in that, lease details, so that's a very conservative number, planning level.
Does this, does this ever become mandatory? Does the state ever come to us and say, Akushnet, you have to deal with it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this could become, they could point to an area and say, this is flowing into the river?
Yes.
You have to do it within five years?
Yes, because if you look, if you look online under the estuaries program, and there's a report for Inter New Bedford Harbor, and Akushnet is named in that, and what they say is there's a number of septic systems that are contributing to this. If you get to the point where you are mandated to clean it up, then you lose any opportunity for 0% money. The other thing about the SRF too, that Akushnet is eligible for is, it's called in principal forgiveness because of the socioeconomics in Akushnet. You know, there's varying, various income levels. And with that, the state gets, and I can't tell you how much it is, it depends on, they have a pot of money, so much money, and they have more applications than the money covers. And the federal government contributes 80% of the state revolving fund, and a certain percentage of that gets put aside for what they call principal forgiveness. So Akushnet is, is a community that, it's like a grant. You would get a certain amount depending on how many other principal forgiveness communities are involved.
When do we find out if we qualify?
You do qualify. I just don't know how much it is.
When is that a hall?
It was once the federal government and the state government confirmed that, yes, this is the portion that we're putting in, here's all the projects that are being funded, here's, there's so many principal forgiveness, I have two other communities that will be eligible for that. They have to figure out how much communities are looking to borrow, how many of them, and then they spread whatever percentage that they have for that.
It's based on a percentage of the project?
Yes.
That's all, that's how they look at it?
Yeah. So there would be...
Have you seen percentages?
No, because we're so early in that process. In other words, Akushnet is still on the list. We're going to write a letter and say, we're going to step aside and we'll come back and apply next year. I don't know how many of that. We would know probably after June. June 30th would be the next deadline for the SRF.
Are there a lot of communities doing, doing these kind of things today in the Commonwealth?
Yeah. And the state revolving fund is really the biggest.
Finance on?
Yes, yes. There's very little in the form of grants, you know, we could look at rural development. I know, I worked here years ago, we looked at rural development. You're just over the population, just over 10,000, 10,000 in capita. There's Mass Works grants that help fund sewer, but they're looking to create jobs, promote housing.
Sure.
We don't have any economic development, you know, big areas where it's commercial and industrial zoning. Right now, Akushnet doesn't have any of that right now.
We could once we get sewer.
Yeah.
Because nobody, nobody's going to open a big business or a business of any capacity, a medium-sized business without having sewer. You just can't. You can't have a septic system if you haven't, you know, $10 employees or $5 employees or even $1,000 employees, right?
The one thing that sort of sticks with, I'd love to do all of this. I really love all of it, all of it, all the colors. The piece that's sort of sticking with me and is a little terrifying is $40,000 average cost per house. And I, and you're saying that that's really not the way it works, but, I mean, I'm saying that's an average cost per house, and maybe it's even 20 upstairs, 20 down, it's still a big number. I think at that level, that's a, that's a tough sell for us. I don't know that many residents are going to sign on to, I'm going to have a $40,000 betterment. You know, you're going to hit me with that. I don't know how we sell that under any circumstances.
We want to, before we give you that number, we want to go back in and look at the estimates, set up a betterment table basically. Look at all the land use codes and really give you a solid range. Right now, you know, we'd be looking at X to X. The thing with the state revolving fund, if the town went that route and somebody had, I'm going to say average betterments that we're seeing in town, neck towns now are $25,000 to $35,000 range. That's, that's what the average is. The principal forgiveness will help bring that down a little bit, but the town can take...
For some people though, right? I mean, principal forgiveness is, that's not for everybody. Say you have 300 homes.
That comes off the top. That's Akushnet.
Oh, it'll come right off the top? So it doesn't matter what your income levels are?
No.
Principal forgiveness is, if somebody's making $200,000 a year versus though...
It comes off the $12 million, right?
Yes, off the top. And the town has, and you issue betterments, if you borrow for 30 years, you can borrow for 30 years at 0%. You can then offer to anybody in the sewer plan to take on that betterment financing, anywhere from 5% down, whatever the town votes on interest.
2% above the borrowing rate.
Yeah.
Correct. It would be 2%.
2% if, if it was 0%. But if we borrowed the money, let's say, give you a number, Roger, 5?
But it's not 2% because you've got to borrow 1.2 for the planning and the engineering and all that stuff. So there's a borrowing cost. So what is that borrowing cost is a percentage of the $12 million, so it's a little bit of a...
So there's going to be some interest.
Right.
You're going to have some number.
We'll figure it out once we're ready to go.
And it's one of the things that scares me, if you do it in-house, it'll be 2% above what we borrow the money for. So if we borrow the money, let's say 5%, that means we're loaning it at 7%.
Run the numbers, we'll see where it comes out.
Yeah.
I think when we get to that point where, where, because this is early, we haven't really reached this point to look at individual numbers, you know, that it makes sense to do a number of workshops with the town, the finance.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll figure it out.
Now, with all these projects, the city in New Bedford can handle it? Or is we have to go project at a time? Is that why it's broken down now?
We're meeting with New Bedford.
I think that in...
We're going to meet with New Bedford. We're in touch.
Oh, I didn't see Kathy over there. Hi Kathy.
How are you? Yeah, so we've gotten in touch with them. They're trying to figure out their schedule so that we can meet with them to discuss that they can, will be able to take more sewers.
Our interministerial agreement, Kevin, you're absolutely correct, guarantees a certain capacity in that plan. We own a certain capacity through it. With the one exception that if they're having difficulty with flow, that's, that's an exemption. So now we make sure that they're not going to revoke that, and when we create this flow, they can take the flow.
And we have to have, we have to, the board would need to sit down, not anybody else, but the board needs to sit down with the city of New Bedford and make sure that when we have, we tie that into our interministerial agreement, that certain amount of additional flow is added to that, so they can't back out as we're halfway through.
Yeah, we can't, we can't start a project.
The city can't say, that's right, closing doors on you, there's too much going, you know what I mean? And then we're stuck in...
That scares the hell out of me.
Of course, so it's all going to be done and done in writing, and everything's going to be done in the interministerial agreements. We have water and sewer, so I'm pretty familiar with both of those agreements, but I know there's some restrictions there, so we have to be careful of that as well. You have anything else, gentlemen?
Any more good news for us?
Any more good news for us?
Actually, I thought this was good news.
You thought this was good news, honey?
It is good news in a sense, but it's bad news on how much it costs, right?
But a septic system in some of these areas is gonna cost that anyway, too.
New septic systems, yeah. New septic systems generally cost, new septic system generally costs $20,000 plus today.
Right. But then you have no additional cost to pump sewer. See, there's a big cost, additional cost to sewer.
Well, sometimes there is some pump systems, you have a lot of ongoing costs, you don't know.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of cost with sewer, that's the other problem. That's the other explanation you need to get residents before you tie people in is, it's a substantial cost. Our rate, not, our sewer rate is pretty high. And it hurts a lot of people paying for sewer, so that's another cost you have to factor in. And I know I'll have that dialogue with the residents, because I'm not gonna hide any cost for them. But you have to be straightforward and as honest as you can presenting these packages to people so they make good prudent decisions for themselves and their families. Because you can't tell them it's this much money for your betterment, and then we're gonna send you a sewer bill with $1,000 every quarter. And there are people in the town of Acushnet that pay $1,000 for a sewer bill. It's a lot of money.
May I add one more thing?
Sure.
And, you know, we talked about a lot of costs here, that are fairly high, of course, and it's a concern to everybody. One thing that you may wanna consider for the design, going forward with the design, which would need to be done no matter what for the project, whether you decided to go forward in-house or go out to bid, public bidding under the SRF, is that it might be helpful to consider going forward with the design at stages. Some of the initial work that would need to be done before any of the actual design work would be done with the geohydro investigations, which would include a survey, the borings, and wetlands flagging. None of the design could be done until those investigations had been done, and we knew what we were working with clearly. And the cost for that would be approximately $300,000. So the board may wanna consider going forward with part of the design work, maybe that first phase of it, to get that preliminary information, so that when and if you decide to move forward with the rest of the project, that would be completed, and it would also advance the time that the design would take to complete. So it's just something for your consideration. It might help for the funding to break it up in.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of financial plan in here, because just that, just that 300 grand you're talking about, Ms. Harris, you can't take that from the current sewer users' surplus reserve fund, because it's not fared it in, because they're not benefiting anything from future sewer, other than maybe a more normalized slope of the curve of the rate as we introduce more uses. But other than that, that's not, you can't even do that. So again, we might be, guys, we might be, might be looking at borrowing for that initial phase, $300,000. And if this goes nowhere, how do we pay back the $300,000?
It's just a consideration. I thought I would offer as a consideration.
Could you like, set up a timeline, like, you know, what, you know, we could be doing, possible costs? I mean, you said that, we have the engineering fees, like, I don't know if you have it in a plan or whatever. This way here, at least we know what we're talking about, you know, we could get more than $20,000.
If the board decides to move forward with this next year, as Rosemary said, that we'll be applying for SRF funding again in August, that would mean that in early 2020, you would know that you were on the, on the funding list, and it's expected that the town would be. The town would need to vote if they wanted to go forward with the project by the annual town meeting in the spring, by June 30th. And then the next step would be that the design plans, preliminary design plans, would need to be submitted to DEP and the SRF by October of 2020. So that's a very short period of time. So in order to, if you're thinking of moving forward with that, it would be helpful to start some of the design process in advance. And offering the consideration of breaking it up in components, so that it might help with the costs. It's something for your consideration.
Thanks, one question, something we discussed last time. Any, any additional information on the school sewer line, and whether or not any tie-ins would be allowed into that?
Yes, we do have some, maybe not that. Jason has looked at that area, and he can explain that to you a little bit.
Well, that's priority area 5.
Fox, yes.
Yep, so, yes, I know this was part of the discussion last time, so I brought a zoom-in map of Area 5. So we went back through all of our records, all of our correspondence on this. This goes back to, you know, Alan had originally asked us to add, to look at, could the reservoir states area, so school is here, this is the reservoir states. Could that possibly be tied into the school pump station? As we discussed last time, the school pump station does have capacity to accept a few more homes, a little over 120, 130 in that ballpark. The issue is, you have to get the wastewater from the homes to the school pump station, rather than tying directly into the force main. So the area, as part of the CWP work, we came up with a master plan for the entire area. And that includes getting the reservoir road area, as well as the Lynn Ellen Drive area, which is almost across the street from the schools, tying that into the school pump station. Those are the closest areas, and then the number of homes, it's almost exactly the available capacity there.
So anything additional? Mr. Cabral lives on that corner of Middle Road, across from, well, it's not even across, there's another neighborhood on the other side of that, but on that shop bend of Middle Road there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you're in that area over there?
Right.
The top neighborhood, that's Blueberry and Elderberry you're showing, it's already sewed.
Over here.
Oh, that's way up there? All right, so you still have another little neighborhood over there?
Right.
You could never tie those in, can you? Because that sewer main that comes from the school that runs to, up Peckham Road, that's actually running uphill, so you can't gravity feed into that system, because it's all gonna flow back down.
Exactly, yeah. The high point is right about at the trailer park, so right around here.
Yeah. So that's a, that's a pretty significant problem.
So, right, we were showing everything, basically on this side of the hill going back to the school pump station, and then everything in this area, the green is a, would be a proposed pump station.
So what is, what is possible? Is anything possible, or is it just?
Not what I'm going.
Is it possible, well, without cost, of course, but is it, is it possible to do something in this area to tie additional homes into that line?
Into the force main?
Into the force main, yeah.
Right. So the issue is the low-pressure sewer that you would need to pump into that. Those pumps aren't always compatible with the school pump station pumps. There are different types of pumps. One's a positive displacement pump, one's a centrifugal pump. So we took, we, we looked at it internally, we also checked with the grinder pump company. You know, they, they have their own calculations they can run, because they're motivated to make it work, because they'd be able to sell, you know, 100 of these units. But they, they found that, based on the length of the force main, and then the number of homes, you know, along Peckham Road here, between the school and New Bedford, there's potential that it essentially doesn't have the capacity to tie all those homes in.
Does not.
Does not, right.
So with the other pump station, would that would work? I mean, if you pump into that one, then pump up, or?
And that's what our plan in the CWP is, is to build a second pump station here, use the existing force main.
That would be able to take reservoir, Lynn Ellen, the trailer park, pump into that, and then back up?
No. This one would take flow from, from this area, essentially.
Oh, it'd be separate? Then the line that's there?
There'd be a gravity sewer connecting all these houses to the pump station.
Oh, coming back, okay.
And then the pump station would pump it to New Bedford.
So there's a potential to put 120 homes in using the reservoir road area and the Lynn Ellen Drive area? And that could go to the school pump station, and what is the cost of that?
Just that area?
Well, yeah, that would depend if, if it's done by town crews, or done prevailing wage. We didn't break that out, you know, just that area, but we could do that, you know, fairly easily.
I think that makes some sense.
That seems like one of the simplest areas to get going on something, too. I mean, you know, I don't wanna get this. Is that an ease area at all, like a definitive ease area? That's a relatively new development compared to what we have Phase 1 and Phase 2, us all, and those houses down on the road, the trailer park, isn't it?
The only, I mean, the only comment I made, what started this discussion about that line is just, it kills me every time I'm driving in this area and I see people replacing their septic system. When I know they've got a sewer line running right by the house in front of the street, up and down Peckham Road. I mean, that whole stretch along that sewer line, I see people replacing their septic systems at a cost. And they've got a sewer line running right by their house. So it just seems that this is low-hanging fruit, that we should try to.
Does it seem possible now?
I don't know, does it? That's what I'm asking, you don't know what it costs.
So is, you wanna know what really pricks me in the head like a voodoo doll? We spent $110,000 on a sewer enterprise fund reserves to upgrade that pumping station, and we can't utilize anything. Is that fair to the people that we took $110,000 out of reserves for? That have no interest in this, in that pumping station that we upgraded the schools, because we were told that if we upgraded those pumping stations, we'd be able to tie in homes. Now there's a further additional cost, and we used $110,000 of surplus revenue from our sewer enterprise fund that's gone for a pumping station. That's really not good for us, too much.
Well, you can take those two neighborhoods, if the flow is, is connected to the pump station.
If we do it, man, if we do it.
I still, I still think, you know, I, I think that it was a bad mistake to use that $110,000 for that pumping station. We should have, we should have taken that 100, that $110,000, because it was far the school, should have came from general taxation, not from the sewer surplus.
Still can.
At the time, would that, we, so long, now where the pipe is not big enough?
No, you still can.
With that pipe? I believe it is in, in this board's best interest. I believe it's in this board's interest to replace that $110,000 that we took from the sewer surplus account for that pumping station, and take it out of general taxation, because it benefits the school. And at this point, it's only the school. And for additional homes, it wasn't worth it. And that's, that's additional homes that is maybe gonna happen somewhere down the road.
Well, just further to that, and I agree with what you're saying. What, again, this is Phase 6, or 0.5. So would come after 1 through 4. But if this got, we're saying the water doesn't matter, and this seems like something that's doable, because the line's there. If this got accelerated, is that realistic, that, to accelerate this area?
The whole area, or just right around?
Well, whatever, whatever. We said we got 100, 100 homes, whatever. I mean, that's 100 homes that are playing their wastewater into the ground.
Right, yeah, and we, we talked to Dan about this last time, he's comfortable doing that work, so. Yeah, we could break out what that cost would be.
Would a pumping station need to be quiet in reservoir? Is that, because that's downhill, there's a lot of homes downhill.
Yeah, those would have to be grinder pumps that pump up to a gravity sewer.
A grinder pump, a grinder pump in every home? Or a grinder pumping station? An actual pumping station to pump it to another pumping station, like a smaller pumping, a substation, to pump? Because you can't get uphill, right? It rolls downhill, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so there's a lot of homes downhill in reservoir states, I'm very familiar with that neighborhood.
Right.
Okay? So how would those people, let's say there's 75 homes just in that one neighborhood, because we have Lynn Ellen on the other side, it's probably got 30, 50 homes in that neighborhood over there, okay? How do we get everybody's sewer uphill to the school pumping station? In order for this to be feasible?
What we're showing in the CWP right now is a individual grinder pump at those low-lying homes. Similar to what you have on the edge of the system.
Grinder pumps in individual homes, or grinder pump station? So some will like, gravity fed until as much as we can get, and then have the homes uphill go down, and then we pump it to the schools.
Right now, it's in individual homes, based on the number of houses. Typically around 40 to 50 lots. If you have more than 50, that's when it would be worth it to build a new pump station similar to the school. And this is actually right on the cusp here, you know, the number of downhill.
So the only thing for the consideration on the board, if you're seeing how we're talking about this, I'm glad Mr. Cabral brought this back up. As far as that $110,000, I again, I again think that it should come from general taxation, because it was for the schools, okay? If and when we were to go to that phase, if we were to try to do that phase, okay? That's when you could apply the 110 to get back from general taxation to those homes, and apply that 110 towards the betterment, fall those homes that would then be utilizing that new pumping station. Is that agreeable? Do you agree with that? So there's $110,000 that was placed, but we're not getting anything from it. So if you tied in 120, 150 homes to go to the, and we pumped it to the, back to the schools, and then up Peckham Road, then you would take the 110 to reimburse back with a general fund, and you could take that 120, 110 that we took from sewer users and put that.
It'd make logical sense, because it's of value to that sewer area.
Of course.
So then you could put it into the betterment, and you would restore the money to the trust.
If this happened in seven years, would we go backwards and do that?
It's up to the board at that time, yes.
Okay, all right.
I could do it any, frankly, you could do it at any time. Because I agree with, you know, Mr. Gasper, that that money was originally supposed to bet a benefit to add in the neighborhood. We haven't been able to do that, therefore, it's not fair to the sewer users that we charge them essentially for something they can't use.
So when the board was, when the board was looking at it, and we agreed to do it, I think we're all under the agreement that we could tie in a bunch of homes, right, Mr. Cabral? Right. The problem with that is now we're being told multiple stories that we can't, we can't, we can't if we do this, but we're gonna spend a million dollars to do this. So what I'm saying, for all the current sewer users, we took $110,000 of money. And we could have put that back into the surplus, once we tied in all these homes. But it doesn't look like there's any real hope of doing that and replenishing our surplus. And we've really depleted our surplus for sewer, and that's, we're at a dangerous level in our surplus because of that action. So I'm trying to plead to the board now and make the case to say, could we do something as an article for town meeting? And that's why we're bringing this up, to say, let's replenish that $110,000 back to sewer surplus, because I think we need to.
I think you're absolutely correct.
Thank you. That's all, I know it's gonna under you, but you're in the conversation, because you're the planning guy and the engineering firm that's doing all this. We have to have this dialogue now, and I'm glad Mr. Cabral brought this back up, because it's been really bugging me for a long time, and the opportunity's knocked, so I'm speaking. You're all, 920 sewer users, Kathy?
928.
928. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So get on all of them.
Pay me some money, I can get a grant.
Free money.
All right.
Really free.
Patiently waiting, go.
Do you wanna go?
It's okay.
You guys.
You all set?
Yes.
We won't be offended.
Would you like us to leave these boards?
Please.
We paid for them, right?
Absolutely, they're yours.
It's a center of bill.
They are yours.
$5 apiece?
They're on the house.
On the house, huh?
But just to be clear on.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Harris, too, for all the work you've done for the town.
Oh, you're welcome.
You've been very instrumental for the town of Fisher.
But just to be clear on this, the homes that can go into, when we, when we looked at the school pump station, which has approximately 120, 130 homes, pump station had capacity to handle. What Jason has said, and I'm not sure if it was clear, is that these two areas count about approximately that number, about 120, 130 homes. So those could tie in without much additional work, okay? But it's these other areas that involve a lot more.
We do what we can do.
But so, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I'm not sure if it was.
It's, I'm sorry, but it's easy for us all to sit here and say, oh, that's great, and let's go ahead and do this. But it requires town meeting vote. And a couple of times, and I was on the finance committee when this happened, the town, the people, the townspeople have rejected sewer phases in the past. So it's all in how we present this package. It's our job to present this package to the residents, and either convince them, or they just say, quite honestly, I don't want this right now. And then we'll have to take that into consideration, we move to another phase and see if those people are. I believe it's important that you just don't hold a town meeting and have willy-nillys from phases that aren't gonna be impacted. I would say that you would have to send a direct letter to everybody's home that's gonna be, with an invitation to show up at the town meeting, or these public hearings, and make sure that everybody's aware of it. And those people are engaged at that town meeting. It's not fair for somebody that's not impacted by this cost to be voting on that cost, you follow me? That's, that's a critical point that needs to be made for everybody that's out there, because those are the people that it's gonna hit in the wallet, not the people on the north end of town where they don't care, because sewer's never been reaching them, you follow me?
Well, what we're doing right now is we're providing you with some, the preliminary information of where we're at with things, and gives you a lot of food for thought.
Right, oh yeah, a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
No more trips to Florida for you.
Got that right, that we just said. Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Hey Dana and Steve.
What's still here?
Yes, it is.
One member of the committee's here.
Mr. Flynn, how are you?
Good thanks, how are you doing?
Good, nice seeing you.
As a resident of a reservoir state, so I can say almost every Title 5 inspection has failed, even though the neighbor's only 18 to 20 years old. Has that high water table? The Title 5, they changed that. John, he knows a lot about Title 5s, he probably has one. Dana, good stuff.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for taking the time to review our budget submission. As you can see, it's, we pretty much level funded it across the board. We have made some changes within line items on our budget, and that is to get the line items that are in need of some additional support to get us up to speed. Whereas if you look at your first fringe benefit, maintenance employees, if you look at your green tabbed FY '18 actual of 29, 672.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, are we starting with page 1, with Salads?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, all right, I'll start with Salads. My apologies.
That's page 1 of my board.
Yes, so the only changes thus far on Salads was the cola. I guess you guys had just voted in 2% for management, and that's all that's been presented.
Can I ask a quick question on that? I noticed that you don't have an increase for clubhouse employees or maintenance employees. Is there a reason why?
It was discussed as we're reviewing the wage and classification process.[1735.48] We haven't established exactly where we're at with regards to pay rates for our employees. And it was my understanding that we were just moving forward with two percent.
Okay.
On.
Okay.
The way that was explained to us or requested of us at the last meeting we had as a committee was that we are to take the results of the wage and classification and fit them within the dollar amount structure that we have indicated on the budget.
Okay.
So when changes come through the wage and classification, then we go through our staffing schedules and incorporate those increases and.
Retroactive.
We did that because of non-union, right? So we did a lot of the wage and classification.
And we did it as part of the wage and class. And I'm working with the golf committee to establish the actual job descriptions. They're doing the classification process, which there is a proposal now that Ed has prepared and you'll like it, no problem. And it needs to be adopted by the golf committee and then recommended for implementation to the board of selection, which hopefully will be before you at the next meeting.
Okay, that's good.
And then the key, of course, is we're sort of running close on time because in March, they're going to open again.
Correct.
You just. But that doesn't, that's only for budgetary reasons. They can open in March, it has no impact on salaries. Their salaries don't kick in until July first. And it's gonna be.
Right, but those would be retroactive, should you make any changes.
Correct.
This isn't for the, this is.
I'm sorry?
This is retroactive.
That would be up to the board to determine whether they would be retroactive or effective July one. Now, the only thing that you'd have a problem with is where if you decided to comply with minimum wage, you would have to make an adjustment for those that are currently eleven dollars an hour. So minimum wage now being, as of January first, twelve.
Twelve, so it is optional.
A municipality is not bound by minimum wage.
Oh, no?
This is the stickler that when you're, if you don't make it mandatory and it is optional and we don't do it, then you're competing against other private sector employees that are paying their.
Dana, I think it's a waste of conversation. It's a bucking owl, how many guys we have paid a minimum wage? What is that really equal to the golf course peanuts? Let's move on.
Alright.
With that being said, so two percent COLA established. And if you move into the next section, if I'm not mistaken, I think you're looking at fringe benefits, maintenance employees.
I'm still, I'm sorry, I'll go back one. The treasurer collector's an allocation, is that an allocation?
It's an allocation.
And we tell them what that number that is?
We tell them.
We tell them what that number needs to be.
Excuse me, Brian, does their schedule reflect the change that Julie made last week?
Yes.
Does it?
Yeah. Alright, I don't have that sheet, is your final number? One four.
Five thousand.
One four, six, four, zero, seven, zero.
I'm sorry, what are you looking at?
I have five, one, four, five.
Yeah.
For that line, I have this five, one, four.
Five thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars?
Yes.
Good.
Correct, but your total for the FY twenty retirement request?
Last page.
Last page.
One million, four sixty-four, three fifty-two.
Alright, so it should be one four, one four, six, four, zero, seven, zero. I'm gonna have her take that balance that she adjusted out of the capital projects just to make it level funded to this year.
Alright, so your budget was only, so I'm gonna ruin the surprise, but your total budget's only up by like two hundred and eighty bucks.
Correct, that's right. That's where he's going. He's only.
That's correct.
If you think, if you think in a difference, it's a hundred and eighty-two approximately in the treasurer collector.
Correct.
And the other hundreds in longevity, which is the item below it. So, and what, you know, Julie had proposed, or indicated to Ed that those changes were going to be made. We responded back if she had made any subtractions from others to keep us at level funding. She had not, so it appears as though it would have been left up to us to do. Again, I, you know, I would recommend just taking it out as we took every other expense out of the monies that were set aside for equipment leases because we didn't enter into any.
Oh, we can do that.
So if you did that, you would take the equipment lease number and reduce it to.
Line item number, sir?
Line item.
Fifty.
It's on the third, I believe it's on page four.
Five eight, zero, zero, nine, zero.
Equipment leases would go down to eleven thousand, four seventy-one. And that would bring, that would bring your budget balance at the bottom in the blue box on the last page at one million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, zero, seven, zero, which it was last year.
So that some of the changes that were made did occur on the fringe benefits line item. And as I was stating, the FY eighteen actual was twenty-nine, six, seventy-two. We've increased last year's number up to the twenty-nine, six, seventy-two to meet the expected demand that we're gonna need in that line item. So it went up twenty-six percent, but it's only matching what we spent in FY eighteen.
Yeah, your actual, I have that circled, so your nineteen was an underappropriation, it looks like.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Because you're level funded with the prior year actual, so it just tells me that that line item was underfunded.
Correct, but fringe benefits isn't anything that we have any control of.
I understand.
Maintenance equipment, seems now we're not leasing any new equipment as of right now. We were going to increase the maintenance, our repair maintenance equipment up to twenty-five thousand because we're gonna see additional wear and tear on those items. And Steve's keeping track of that and keeping us well versed in the status of those pieces. I reduced communication advertising to offset an increase in pro shop supplies. We had an exceptional playing season the season before, thereby depleting some of our ball inventory and stuff, the impulse sale stuff. I need to reimburse, replenish those, that inventory, so I increased it by a thousand dollars. Credit card fees, if you look back again, FY eighteen, we're just moving this year's number to meet what the demand is gonna be for our credit card purchases.
Did you come up shortfall in that line item too, though? It seems that that's a pretty big difference.
We had put twenty thousand in because we were running twenty, twenty-one in previous years. And then on FY eighteen, it ended up falling in at twenty-six, nine, eighty-nine.
Yeah.
So.
But you had a better season than you could have.
We had a.
You processed more credit cards.
Yes.
Instead of cash, even if the sales stayed the same, if your cash sales went down but credit card receipts went up, that twenty-eight's gonna be in.
Right, so what you see is with our pro passes and large purchases, it always comes to the golf course with fifteen hundred, twenty-two hundred in cash and buying a season pass, not many, maybe one or two. They're a little bit tatted up.
You need to check the front pocket, don't worry about the back pocket.
But the, so we did have to increase that line item. Your gasoline, twenty thousand bucks. You spent twenty thousand bucks. Close to it.
Yes, this year, for instance, we are going to be close to that twenty thousand dollar number depending on how the.
That's eleven thousand gallons of gasoline, that's a lot of gas.
It's gasoline, diesel fuel and hydraulic oils, all those three.
Oh, you buy lubricants in that gasoline?
Well, the lubricant, yeah, your engine oil, your motor oil and your hydraulic oil.
Alright, so it's one of those out one line, right?
Plus your gasoline.
Yeah.
So those items are in that line.
Right.
Fall under that line, excuse me.
Speaking with Steve and him getting insight from his vendors, fertilizers, wedding agents and pesticides, the trend in that market, it tends to be going up five percent. So we were increasing that line item as well by five percent anticipating those increased costs. So if you also notice the decrease in equipment leases, obviously because we're not going to lease any equipment. That's going down to eleven thousand, four seventy-one as of now, since we just changed that number. And then with long-term principal and interest, as we extend out, our interest is.
So equipment leases, I noticed that was a dramatic change, but that's why your M went up, right?
Well, the reason the equipment leases was dramatic change, if you remember back in two thousand, actually before two thousand and eleven, excuse me, in two thousand and six, we had made a decision to go basically to what amounted to a five-year equipment replacement program on the pieces of equipment that were most significantly used and showed most significant wear and tear. We did that in two thousand and eleven, which should have been coming up in two thousand and sixteen or seventeen. The decision was made that we were not going to do that. So what we're doing, what we've done is we've entered into a situation where now we have significant repairs on the equipment that we have to keep it going. Hydraulic pumps, hydraulic hoses and so on.
Gotcha.
So since that money was in the budget and that money was not spent, that was where the funds to balance off increases in other categories were taken from. So that's why it looks like there's a dramatic change there. And those equipment repair costs, Mr. Isaac came up with that number. I personally feel that that twenty-five thousand dollars is going to be a little short if we have a major equipment issue, but hopefully we won't, you know, have that during the course of the season. We're doing significant work on all of our equipment now to get it up to speed and hopefully by assuming some of those expenses now will cut or stop the, or prevent the occurrence later on in the middle of the season.
I think the mindset behind this philosophy is the fact that obviously we've reached a market peak. We're anticipating maybe a downturn. If there is a downturn, we don't want to extend ourselves with unnecessary debt. Steve stays on top of what he feels are necessities and priorities with regards to repair and maybe replacement. If we run, you know, a profitable season, we'll pick up pieces that we need to replace. The other part of the mindset was they had determined that we weren't really comfortable with doing the whole fleet at once, whereas they'd like to stagger it out. So you can, you know, have a couple of pieces that are brand new, a couple that are aging and kind of work through your equipment that way.
Those plans developed for that, that was decided and the plan that was suggested to go into incorporated that, but it was decided not to assume any additional debt at that particular time.
So the golf committees approved this budget, is that correct?
Yes, the golf committee, what, the golf committee approved the budget. The budget went to the finance committee, we presented to the finance committee, I believe, they took a vote, they approved. So that's where we are.
They just.
They didn't vote?
No, they just looking at it. But Mr. Flynn, the golf committee's good with this budget, correct?
Exactly, as I said at the beginning, the end figure was really trying to level fund it and then backing the increases that you had to do and thinking, where could we take from?
Correct.
To backfill it.
Correct.
As I stated, holding off on any equipment purchases, you know, I believe that maybe we should take, if we really need to. We have had three decent years in a row, so we've built up reserves a little bit. So we really have a catastrophic loss of a piece of equipment. To me, we just do a transfer on the reserves and buy it outright instead of incurring the debt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good.
So anticipating a downline or?
Well, I think in the industry in itself, it's in decline.
I wouldn't, I don't, I wouldn't go that far. Reading the information that's, well, reading the information that's coming out of the.
It's all propaganda, everybody tries to fluff it up, but.
Well, the industry is, I think it would best be said that we're going, is going to be holding par. The only unknown for a particular part, and that wasn't a pun.
Yes, it was.
The only indication, the only thing that folks have been saying is that depending, you know, what they've been saying is where weather trends, where it's dry, it's going to stay dry and get drier and where it's wet, it's going to get wetter. And what that means is we can anticipate possibly additional rain in the forecast and that would be the only thing that I think could hamper our round production. Because I think, I think golf is, right now, the general consensus is that golf is holding steady.
And anything can hamper golf, right? I mean, it's a discretionary game, right? So if the economy starts turning south, what are people gonna do? They're gonna cut out discretionary spending, right? So golf's gonna be the first one to go because the wife's gonna say, you don't need to go play golf three times a week, you're only playing once a week, have a nice day, right?
Intuitively.
So the economy has a lot to do with it and it's troubling. From your perspective, I would say from the golf committee's perspective, it's troubling. It's very difficult to have that balance and try to manage where things are going. You've got weather, you have the economy, you never know at any given point, six months into a year, something happens, the federal government, somebody comes out and says something, does something foolishness and all of a sudden people aren't buying anymore and the economy starts heading south. Like I said, discretionary spending is the first thing to go, right?
Agreed.
It's a tough, it's a tough gig, I mean, trying to monetize that game is very difficult to figuring out budgetary and where your revenue's gonna be, it's difficult. So, you know, great job to the golf committee, I just want to throw that out to everybody. And you two guys as managers, great job.
We actually, we fit quite well this past season, even though we did incur some excessive heat in August. And then we obviously, we had a really wet fall, kind of ended the season abruptly. But Steve maintained the course in great conditions as compared to our competitors with our conditions and our price point. I think we did quite well.
How are we doing so far?
I think right now we're roughly up forty, up forty K.
Okay, what was your plan on opening?
I'd like to see, you know, middle of March, it all depends on when we can get rid of the cold, the, you know, of course, the snow has to come in February, March, and when we can get the ground firm up a little bit because when we get these fifty-degree days, it's a mushy swamp.
Yeah, I know. Alright.
Until we get to ground one.
Thanks for your time.
Next boy, next Dana.
That was pretty interesting, excellent, keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is the cable advisory committee. Mr. Wilkes is not here today. John's gonna speak on that?
Aye.
Gentlemen, I'm here on behalf of the cable committee. As you know, we've had some issues with our cable committee, not a committee, our programming.
There was one sitting on your desk.
Is this it? Is this the one you're looking at?
Next one, next one.
Alright, you're on.
So we're at need of upgrading our server, and I'm not the technical person, so from what I, my understanding is our server's been a two thousand and seven and we're in two thousand and nineteen, the service has seen their better days. So you have the estimates from the companies that we've got to do our tightrope business. And you see it in front of you, if you have any technical questions, I'm gonna relinquish the microphone, too.
Actually, if you just want to brief down what, what the purchase of what, how are the hopes to prove?
Yeah, so mainly the bulk would be upgrading the servers from standard deaf ones to HD ones. The video router would be, so it channels it to the right server. The dual monitors so that each channel, so on the first server's channel nine and eighteen, so that has like an interface, so that's how we like interact with it. And then the other stuff is just components and wires mainly.
So I just have one question to the chairman if I can, because I know that we have some integrated equipment in the cable vision arsenal and we've had a lot of problems recently with voices being on one channel and on the other channel, so.
We tried that out, tried to get our viewers to solve that, but that didn't work.
So basically, this, it's basically thirty-five thousand bucks, right?
Yes.
We know that if we spend thirty-five thousand bucks, there's no other issues, like we're gonna spend thirty-five and they're gonna say, oh, we didn't know that this thing downstairs wasn't working with this thing up in Pottings Way's and are we good with this? Oh, we don't know that. Did anybody talk to One Access Media and say, are you sure by us spending this much money, we're gonna be good to go?
So I actually talked to New Bedford's Cable Access and I talked to like the guy who runs it over there. And he said the same thing, that they use tight ropes, that's why I knew tight ropes, okay, because other towns are using it. And they also said they have HD servers, even though the local channels don't have HD, it at least up scales it a little, so we'll have a little better of a picture.
Yeah, that's right.
And then like to future-proof it for when they do come out with HD. The whole sound thing and issues like that are because it's just their old servers, so they just get bugs and they wig out kind of thing. So. I know it'll fix that.
I just comment, I'm a member of the cable committee and I, you know, through that process learned a lot. You know, one of the things I've learned is that Comcast or Xfinity or whatever we call them provides us with money under our cable contract to upgrade our systems in the town. The Town of Akushnet, our cable committee and cable operators have been very conservative in the expenditure of those funds. And we've got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on reserve. Four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on reserve, that's an accumulation of a bunch of years' worth of being conservative with our money. So if you're coming in asking to spend thirty-five thousand dollars of the funds that we're getting under our cable contract, that can be used for no other purpose. No other purpose but this, I'm very comfortable.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures purchased and needed equipment as presented.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
You didn't give me a dollar amount, which is cool.
Oh.
However, I would like to interject on that.
For the.
However, I want to have Nick look at the possibility of upgrading that server from a twenty terabyte to the forty terabyte, which could cost another two grand. So I would ask you to amend your motion to say not to exceed thirty-seven thousand.
I make a, I make a motion to approve the expenditure in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars, not to exceed thirty-seven thousand dollars to purchase the needed equipment as presented.
I have a thing about that. You know.
We did, you know the money we spent in this particular room, nine times out of ten, I guarantee, as I'm standing here, installer's gonna come in and say, oh, we need, uh-oh, we need the microphone.
Then I'll go back to the board and say, I'm gonna amend, I'm gonna amend my motion. Tony, what are you, what are you-
Any more of you guys in the closet coming?
How much do you want down there?
I'm just being honest, it'll never happen.
We're gonna give you, we're gonna give you a contingency here, so an extra five grand, I'll make a, I'll amend my motion to approve up to forty thousand dollars for the expenditure to purchase the needed equipment as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With the first comment again, that the dollars allocated for that purpose only and-
Thank you. I, I just think that the amount of money involved is pretty much.
No, absolutely, no, absolutely, we should, we should be talking, we should be talking.
I mean, I, I didn't think you'd have any difficulty with it.
But for people that don't understand, I think people need to know that, we can't do anything else with that money even if we wanted.
You guys don't have to stay, is this interesting?
Yeah.
Well, you, you have another item that-
Your direct costs.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Plus, we deserved you guys, we gave it our money, so we figured we'd-
Stay around.
There's three hundred thousand dollars left.
All right, next on the agenda, Mar-a-Lane water pipe plan as presented by Dan Maniz. Dan Maniz is here to present to the board as water commissioners.
What's that?
The roadway improvement plan for the paper portion of Mar-a-Lane, which should help improve the water pressure in Hathaway Farm's development. Thank you for waiting.
Oh, thank you.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Just so you can see it a little bit better.
Is this the giant version of the little one that we have?
Yes, yeah, all right, yeah. Good evening, for the record, my name is Jeff Dolman from Site Tech Engineering. Dan Maniz is not here tonight, he's on vacation. So basically, what this plan is, that we're proposing is the second phase, or a separate phase from the Moniz State subdivision, something that is required by the town because of the dead end that we are proposing within the development. So this is to construct a portion of Mar-a-Lane that was never constructed when they did the Hathaway Farm subdivision. It's about a three hundred and fifty foot long road, that's currently just a paper street. You go out there and look at it, it looks as though they started to do the construction, the, the settlement of the right of way has been cleared, it looks like it's been graded, but then for whatever reason, it was never finished. So what we're proposing at this time is to complete that section of Mar-a-Lane, connect that out to Hathaway Road, and also as part of this project, install a six inch water main that would connect from the eight inch water main in Hathaway Road to the six inch water main on the currently improved portion of Mar-a-Lane. So that's basically the gist of it.
So that'll be an open road now, it'll be a paved road, you guys-
That's correct.
Mr. Maniz plans on paving that road?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll match the pavement width in, in Mar-a-Lane, twenty-six feet wide, one foot cape cockburn on either side.
I had a conversation with Dan today, and he's, he's comfortable with this, before he goes in, he really just wants to make sure, he recommends what type of piping to put in there.
Okay, sure.
To go with him.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, with the rains, it's, with the roads, another access out of that area, completes the loop on that part of the, that development.
That's correct.
The only, the only concern that I, that I would have, and I don't know if I, if I see it on the plan, but it doesn't matter, I hear Mr. Tillman saw, just mentioned it to you, I think it's great that you provided another access into that, because for emergency use, if a tree were to go down in that one road that supplies that whole neighborhood, you have another access, so I'm sure Chief of Fire and Chief of Police appreciates this as a second access, and it is looping the system now, the right way. The dead end will be at the end of Margaret Street, I believe it's called.
That's correct.
The only, the only suggestion that I'm gonna make, and I think that the fire chief might bring this up, is that we put a hydrant at the end of the road, the new road that's going in?
Yeah, that's what Dan, Dan wants that, is so we can flush it out.
At the end of-
The new road.
The road with the Moniz Estates.
Your new development.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we have one, we have one at the end of that line.
Because it can only be so many feet, a house can only be so many feet from hydrant, right?
Yeah, that's correct. I, I believe we have-
This has nothing to do with this.
Yeah.
But I believe we're proposing three or four hydrants within that development, and on the dead end line, we always put one at the end.
Yeah, that's right.
In question purposes and stuff like that, so.
It's all I have. Excellent, is there a motion for this? Should be, yeah. No motion? No votes taken?
No.
No prior vote to approve, yeah.
What are we voting on?
Make the motion. This is an intended motion to accept this extension of Mar-a-Lane or the water commission as water commissioners, subject to DPW director.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want the DPW, I mean, the DPW's acceptable.
He's gotta sign off.
Acceptable to planning boards and who might argue with. It's in compliance with the requirements of the town and our subdivision bylaws and our zoning bylaws, I'll endorse it, you know, subject again, DPW approval and planning board approval.
You have a court.
That's a motion.
That's a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for the wait.
No, no problem, and one other thing while I'm here, the, the analysis of the existing water system, I know the plan, we have a meeting with the planning board on Thursday night, I'm sure it's gonna come up on Thursday night, where are we with that in terms of?
I have actually sent your plan to Carol.
Okay.
And just to make sure that there's no problem, the model indicates there should be no problem. I'm gonna put it in writing.
Oh, perfect, all right, I'll just keep that.
I agree with Mr. Noble, I think it's always best to have something like that in writing on file for anything down the road, planning board should have that stuff on file.
Yeah, but at least this way I can just answer the question when I know it's gonna come up on Thursday, so.
I talked to Mr. Gasper on the subject, and he doesn't feel there's any, any question at all, but it tells in suspenders we're gonna get it in writing.
That's perfect, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too. All right. New business and the old business. New business. The town clerk needs to post the election warrant at least seven days before the April first, two thousand nineteen election, to notify the residents of the town who are qualified to vote when and where the election will take place. Again, this year, all precincts will be voting at the Akushnet Elementary School at eight hundred Middle Road, posted open from ten AM to eight PM. Is there a motion to approve?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the annual Monday, April first, two thousand nineteen election warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, discussion of indirect costs to the enterprise funds, presented for discussion purposes at this time, is a list of possible expenses that are allowed by the Department of Revenue that could be assigned to the enterprise funds. The board must consider what expenses are appropriate and necessary, this topic will be on next agenda for decision.
Presented for you this evening, only for your consideration and in preparation for the next meeting, when I will have the finance director with us, is what could be assessed in operating costs, indirect costs rather, to the enterprise funds. So this is, if you go through the IGR, these are all the assignable costs, obviously, you wouldn't do that, but I need to print this before you so that you can determine what you think is an appropriate assignment of cost. And so obviously, since I just gave this to you tonight, because that's when Julie finished it, I'm not asking for any decision from you this evening, merely that this would be on the agenda, where I'll bring the finance director in before you, so we can discuss how you want to do that. I think that's-
Is this a requirement from the Department of Revenue?
It's a requirement that you assess, that you make a policy about how you're gonna apply the indirect cost. There's no requirement as to what you incorporate in the indirect cost.
Okay, that'll be some interesting reading. Have we given, have we given, how did in the board of selection, have we given this a copy to Golf Sewer? And I guess if you want to consider water in enterprise, even though it's technically not labeled an enterprise fund, it's a water revenue fund, but?
There's copy in their bin, but they just got it today.
Okay, oh, there is.
Should be.
So I would-
Fifth dollar, gotta make sure you get it. I think I sent it by email, they had-
Discussion, discussion for the next meeting?
This is just homework.
Okay.
I don't think the, the decision of this magnitude is a major decision to make, and I think that we're gonna need to have some, you know.
Tug of war?
Not really, because there's a limit to how much you can afford to throw out, so.
Okay, next on the agenda, with the-
Mr. Chairman, did you give us two sheets of paper, though?
Yeah, there's another one, it's coming later.
Request?
It's coming, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's not there. And that's senior work off program discussion, the town meeting in two thousand was voted to accept the provisions of Mass General Act chapter fifty-nine, five K, to accept the senior tax work off abatement program. At this time, the program has not been implemented or funded, and the board has received an inquiry from a senior looking for the program to be implemented. The topic is before the board for discussion of the variables and the efficiency, and the effective efficiency of implementing the program. Mr. Noble?
Certainly.
Do some research for us.
I did some research for you, it's complex, it's not easy. The town did adopt the policy, the ability to do a senior workup, they never adopted any guidelines or any requirements, or never funded it. So there is a informational guideline release from the Department of Revenue, from the IGR, that talks about how that gets implemented, and exactly how the situation works. One of the model plans the Department of Revenue points to is Plymouth, Massachusetts, which interestingly, in a fair haven, copied their program after. What you can do right at the moment is authorize opt to a hundred hours of work or a thousand dollars, now that may change with the minimum wage having changed, but at the moment, that's what it's set at.
Per, per, per?
Per household.
Per household.
Okay, now, many towns adopt the seven fifty, nine hundred, thousand, whatever you want to do. So that has to be discussed and agreed. It is funded by the overlay in the overlay, so it's not, it's an article, because it has to be funded, but the source is the overlay.
So funds would be released from the overlay?
From the overlay, by a vote of the board of commissioners and a vote of town meeting. There are requirements or options, you can decide how many hours they can work, you can decide how much of a credit, you know, a maximum right now of a thousand, that may go up to twelve hundred, but that's a maximum. There aren't guidelines as to what is a senior, so they, guideline is sixty years old, you have to indeed be a homeowner in the town, you have to live in the home you're trying to do this with, you have to be a year-round resident. That doesn't mean, by the way, you can't vacation in Florida, it means you need to be a year-round resident.
Six months and a day, that's year-round, right?
Six months and a day, yep. So in other words, if you're a resident of Florida, six months and a day, you're not eligible.
Correct.
Okay, only one member of the household is eligible to participate at the time, these are suggested guidelines now. The tough part is originally, when the program was introduced, it was a raw, here's five hundred bucks off your taxes, or whatever the number is. Now the Department of Revenue decided it is earned wages, so it is subject to tax, so it's taxed both at the federal level, at the state level, and you have to participate in the retirement plan. So obviously, when a senior would work, they wouldn't need the retirement, so at the end of their period of work, they would just basically cash out of their retirement, paperwork, paperwork, paperwork. In addition, the town has the option to put an income limit, you know, not to exceed a certain number. Bear Haven has a limit not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars per year for singles, and thirty-five thousand dollars for couples, so that's pretty low.
Income.
Income, yep, and again, this is a debate of what you would care to do if you want to do it. The downside is, they go onto the payroll, okay, so they would also be covered under our workers' comp program, not wild about that from the cost of workers' comp, but again, something we should check, they'd all have to be Corey and Sori checked to be, to be hired, and if you have too many applicants, the recommended way of resolving who gets it is a lottery. In addition, I'm not sure, I've asked the departments to give me a sense of how many departments could employ a senior, and one of the rules that we have to be very careful of is you cannot supplant a union employee, so there's only a limited number of places I can put them.
So would we need to create new jobs? We'd need to create new jobs to do this.
Possibly, yeah.
Because we can't replace an existing job with-
You can't, yeah, no, you wouldn't be able to do that.
So it's gotta be a brand-new job to the town.
Could you, could you not, I mean, I know it's, it's kind of a convoluted situation here, but, I mean, creating new jobs just for the sake of an abatement on your taxes, I don't know how good of an idea that is, but if you had certain, like, you know, the grass cutters, or the, you know, certain kind of little miscellaneous things, planting flowers, I don't know what.
Planting flowers, being reception at the council on aging could, could work, answering the phone.
Something that's, you know-
Just being an assistant at the council on aging, that makes probably the most sense. If you said, okay, go to the library and put books on the shelf, as long as I didn't replace a union employee, there's no problem with them helping out in the library, they could go on story time and, and read stories in the library, so this, there's places that we can do, they could do filing, you know, that kind of-
Does the value of their property have it in the background?
Yes, the value of the property would have to be taken into account as far as the-
Size of the thing, or could, could they not qualify?
Yeah, if your house was too valuable, you had too much equity in your house, yeah, you, you might not qualify. Those are things that we would have to establish, I think we'd have to establish a little bit of a committee to do a study of what requirements the town would, would impose on this program.
So like, say if the parent of no wage, that's not their gross pays, and that pay that comes off, they can only make the gross amount, right?
Correct.
So if a thousand dollars is in a thousand dollars, or whatever it is.
Right, so a thousand dollars would be eight hundred and change, and then they could literally take the check and sign it over to the town and pay their taxes with that amount of money, but then they have to wait till they get their federal tax refund, or their state tax refund, or their Bencor refund on retirement, before they get all of the money that's due them. It's not great.
And the decision to apply those funds to their real estate taxes, is that mandatory or has it become optional?
Technically, once I hand you a check, it's their option, you know, you could sort of do what you want, so I think that sort of defeats what the purpose was. Also, in these considerations, the town did adopt the senior exemption based on income of five hundred dollars, and there's also the program that this board approved for deferring a portion of your taxes every year.
Actually, a conversation we had before, I think we should do, could we do a summary sheet as to what-
What's available.
What's available to seniors in the community as, as, from a tax perspective, and you, there's, there's a bunch of them, and maybe we can-
There's three major ones. There's the senior tax exemption, there's the deferring of the taxes or an abatement, or the betterment, and then lastly, there's the exemption out of CPA, so you could take that right off your, your tax, I mean, it's more money, but it's still there.
That was just voted for the CPA a few years back, I did that, when I think Selective Law now, Mr. Dean.
Correct, yes.
We did that for CPA.
So those three things exist now.
Could we create a document that-
Yes, I think it was a very good suggestion.
I think you should post it on the internet, I mean, put a senior, you know, a senior discount program, or whatever you want to label it, so if we do have seniors looking at the webpage, I mean, they can see where they, we, we've done deferrals for Sewer Betterment and stuff like that, for seniors under a certain guideline.
I think we could, we could talk about the deferral program, we could talk about the senior credit. Those are income-driven, I want to make sure that you understand that, just because you're sixty-five or whatever, doesn't mean it's automatic, they are income and equity-driven.
Going back to where we started, the jobs program, I'm using the wrong term, but whatever, the jobs program, I mean, I think it-
It's a WPA.
That starts with, do we, do we have jobs in the community that need to be filled? Do we have things, and maybe we need to put them, put that to department, I'm sorry, we have to create new jobs? But do we have a need for that?
I mean, if we did, we would be putting a budget request in.
I know, well, let's, I know, let's...
Okay, so, I mean, could we use some help, I mean, could we put some extra assistance down at the council on aging? Sure, many hands make light work. Could I put somebody in to file in the clerk's office? Yes, we got somebody, it depends upon the skill level of what we, what we get in the application, where we, where we could put the person for maximum use. I mean, I've seen workout programs in other communities that have been extraordinarily successful, and, but they have other options, they have a full, you know, high school, where you could put somebody in to do the attendance, where you could send somebody, actually, I saw one town that literally put a fatigue mat at the front door, and the senior grade greeted every kid that came through the door. They created that job. I mean, I'm not sure, in the, in the grand scheme of things, maybe five jobs total? I, I can't do 20 or 30, I could do five, maybe six. And money isn't necessarily the object, but establishing the, I think some of the things that people understand, because it's a work program for everybody, it isn't, it's a work program for those that are fighting, are fighting a financial hardship. So, it's a way of giving a hand, rather than a handout.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question before you, because before we go into executive session, I was, I was speaking with the residents, why I was late today, on a concern that last week at some point, we had people in the back of our DPW town barn late at night, I'm curious if any one of us, you two gentlemen, or maybe Mr. Noble, know what that was all about, why we have people in the back?
Yeah, and I, and I worked with the police department on that, we had them taking out the fire engine that's there, sold it, and they came after hours, they came late, they couldn't get through the traffic. Even Dan waited as long as he could, they didn't call, they finally showed up, we did open the gate for them.
Did they haul it?
They didn't, the truck they brought was too small.
It's gone now.
So, yeah, it should be gone now.
Also, they were getting rid of that old surplus fire truck, and that was all about why we had people in the back?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Because you kinda hit me up with that when I was...
No, it's not a problem, we, we were working with, at that time, we, we worked with the police department, because I didn't want them there alone.
Now, the senior work program, though, I think we, we moved on to that.
Yeah, you have to get some parameters and figure out.
I mean, the question I have is, where do you want me to go with this? You want me to write some, some requirements for this program?
Find out what the need is.
I don't think, do we need, do we need, maybe COA, maybe library, you know, do we need, do we need people in those...
Well, I've actually asked the departments this morning at the...
This feels like it might be more complicated than it's...
I don't think it's as good a program as you think.
No, I know, but I think, I, you know, back to, let's, let's get information to the seniors in the community as to what's available to them.
Current.
Currently outside of this.
Okay.
Yeah, what the dollar value is, I mean, you look at the dollar value on the betterment, right, the deferral on the betterment, you look at whatever, other...
Did you say, mention another senior deferral for taxation or something?
Does it, you just need to defer half your taxes for... I mean, that's gonna weigh, outweigh anything that you're paying.
You defer all of your taxes up to 50% of the...
Transfer that has to pay.
Yeah, but if you do, when we do the deferrals for, if we do a deferral for like the sewer betterment, I'm familiar with that, I haven't seen one for regular taxation.
That goes to the census.
That goes to the board of assessors, that's why, but, I mean, it gets, it gets recorded on your D, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah.
So this, this payback, yeah, it's always...
It wasn't a reverse.
So, I mean, most important thing about that word is deferral, it's not forgiveness, it's deferral.
It's a help.
But, I mean, it's a huge help, I mean, you took, you look at even the sewer betterment, I mean, that's, you know, even if it's 500 bucks, I mean, 500 bucks a year, that's big bucks, versus your thousand dollars, whatever your taxation... If you are in the income bracket that allows for this deferral, it's like a death.
Absolutely.
All right, so let's get a summary out to people, and we'll start there.
Okay, town's administration's going to...
Okay, sorry, I figured, pardon. So there's two things, when you get to that, and you're, we had originally planned to do the triple meeting of the finance committee, the board of selectmen, and the school board next Wednesday. The school committee is not available, and they have petitioned back to the finance committee to change it to either Tuesday, March 5th, or Wednesday, March 6th. We are meeting regularly on March 5th at 5:00. Wednesday would be a special meeting for, for us, I mean, if we meet on Tuesday night, we meet here at 5:00, be over there by 7:00, you don't close the meeting here, you close it over there. If we meet on the Wednesday, it's another night out, so obviously, I'm pushing for Tuesday night, that's up to this...
What is this, the...
This is the triple meeting of the finance committee, the school committee, and the finance committee. So, this is the presentation of the school committee's budget. Two years ago, we did it, last year, we couldn't do it because of the weather, I'm trying to put this back together this year, so that we can actually have that hearing before all three...
And it's at the school.
It's at the school, yeah.
Either, I would, I can do it either.
Yeah, I mean, if we're here Tuesday, we go over there, it's a long night, but...
Wednesday might be...
I'm hoping to get an answer back from the finance committee.
I'll pick up a meeting that we have on Tuesday, selectmen's meeting.
Not that big.
We can make it as big as we want.
I mean, I've, I've got indirect costs, about the only thing that's really...
I mean, if we're in a meeting, and we're in a meeting, and we're in the meeting, and we're in executive session for two hours, and we're all burnt out, and... What time's the meeting at school?
7:00.
So we just get done.
It's town, it's been a long meeting, so.
Yeah, we had a couple.
We had a lot of, we had a lot of this agenda, so...
So, yeah, whatever works best for the group, whatever works best.
Okay, so, I'll keep you posted on that. Also, this is, again, just for informational purposes, where am I at on the submission already for articles for town meeting? There's a draft right now, obviously, this doesn't mean that this is, you know, they have to be accepted by the board, they have to be vetted out a little bit more, but I thought I'd show you what, what's come in so far. So, again, I wouldn't worry about it yet, until we get nailed down some numbers, some of those projects will disappear, others will be combined, so...
We don't even know what money we have, do we?
Yeah, we have free cash, we have a million.
I know that, but, as far as budgetary, what we're gonna use it, because we have two budgets.
Budget summary document yet?
This week, actually, next week.
So, finance committee doesn't have, what are they working on?
They're working on zero change in revenue, meaning no change in the revenue funds, and from last year, which is conservative, and they're working on accepting the budgets now and just doing budget hearings, and they won't set budgets until they get the revenue projections nailed down. So we're hoping to do that, actually, to be honest with you, where the meeting isn't gonna be next Wednesday, for the schools, we might be doing it next Wednesday, but I'll make sure that you guys get cocktails and everything, so that you know what's going on. But the only, I wouldn't necessarily recommend a change, we're getting a little flack about our revenue projection for exit, for excise from the Department of Revenue.
I have a cure for that excise, Mr. Noble.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I said, when Dan was in here, we talked about road repair, right? And I think that it'd be, it's foolish to keep budgeting up and using monies from the excise, we're already using a million dollars of excise money for budgetary reasons, right? So we've overinflated budgets by a million dollars, and that's where we're at now. I would like to see the town use maybe 200, $250,000 to complement our Chapter 90 funds, so that we can continue to do road improvement at a reasonable pace, instead of this one little road here, one little road there. What's nice about using that money for road repair and not budgetary reasons is, every year, the money's re- reoccurring, so the money comes back, it's every year, it's every year, it's every year. If we end up in a year where we're stuck, and you need a quarter of a million dollars to do something else, you, you don't use it for road repairs, you use it for whatever else you need to use it for, purchasing of equipment and things of that nature, but once you use that, if you take excise and you take $1 million, we jumped from 800,000 to $1 million the last couple of years, if you jump that number again by 20%, you go to 1.2 million dollars, okay? Then, then you're trapped in this little window that you have, and we don't know where all excise is, so excise is based off a six-year scale, it depreciates, so if we have 1.6, where a lot of money's been pulled in, because a lot of new cars are being pulled in, when you drop to the bottom of the scale, does that 1.6 become 1.3 or 1.4? And if you use that money and the budget's too close to that, you could get trapped, and I don't like to see us doing that anyway, and expanding budgets any further, so I'd like to see us use a little bit of the excise for what its original appropriation was, because when excise first came out, think about what it's called, an excise mode of vehicle tax, it was produced by the state and the Commonwealth for road and vehicles, road and bridge repair. We've never used it for any of the above, we just use it for budgetary reasons, so why not use it for...
Like social security.
Why not use it, yeah, why not, why not use it, why not use it first?
On your list of articles, there's an article, request for $250,000 for road maintenance.